Hi, everyone. We're going to get started with our February board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
Motion we approve?
All in favor?
Host? Motion passes. If you're able, stand for the pledge and followed by that, Mr. Larson will give the invocation.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening. We ask for thy presence. We make decisions for our district. We are grateful for the students and parents and for our educators and all of our staff. Ask for a blessing upon them. We'd ask that would help us to make appropriate and good decisions that will profit our district and help us to be able to provide the education for our children that we desire. And we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Item 3.2, recognition of the junior high wrestling team. Thanks for coming back, everybody. Is Mrs. Clark coming up?
Mrs. Clark, coaches, don't be shy. Yes, Mr. Wilhelm, we want you to come up.
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't hear nothing.
I think the mics are low. Is it hard to hear back there?
Couldn't even hear.
Well, thanks for coming back twice.
Pardon me?
Thanks for coming back twice.
Are the, are the microphones working? Can y'all hear? You can't hear at all?
Yeah, well, usually they're green when you talk.
Just stand here. They want to look at you. All right. Well, thank you for recognizing. Do we want to wait for Shad to come back or no?
Sure. Here it comes.
Hey, thank you for having us here. I want to kind of talk about the team a little bit. They took first at the White Mountain League Championship this year. There was nine other teams. We kind of had a probably 50-50 record for duels during the year, so I didn't really expect it. And coaches and I kind of got together right around the, for the final round at the meet. And I'd like, we have 12 in the finals. And I said, what's the team scores? Anyways, so we end up with 12 in the finals. We had nine wrestling for first and second. And it turned out really good. I was extremely proud of these young men. They wrestled really hard. We had Ben Franz, he took first. Where you at, Ben? This is a White Mountain League champion right here. And Dowlin, who's Dowlin at? Dowlin Rawlings, he took first. And so they had a, they, Dowlin went undefeated this year and through the White Mountain League. And then, then we went to state. So state was, was a pretty, I don't know how to explain state. We took probably the best round we've ever had in the finals at state. We had six boys in the, going in for the finals and five of them won. So five out of the six won their final match. So, and then we ended up taking fifth at state. And a couple of highlight matches there. Dylan Perkins, Pat, where is Dylan today? Anyways, little Dylan, Dylan and Dowlin both Rawlings came from behind in their matches. And I think he both pinned, correct? Way behind. It was dramatic. It was, it was unbelievable. I think we set the noise record when that Dowlin pinned his come-from-behind win, the noise record in that, in that stadium, thanks to his mom and family. That was pretty awesome. That place erupted. So we had a really good time down there. Ruthie, Ruthie Wilhelm here. She wrestled for us as a 73-pounder all year and then went to state. She won two matches in the boy's side of the bracket. She was double bracketed. That means she wrestled for the boy's side and the girl's side. This is the first year they had a state championship for girls in junior high. And it's the only state sanctioned school championship. And she took first. So she's our state champion, the first in, in the state of Arizona to the first girl's state champion for the junior high. So good job for Ruthie. So we have a couple of younger, we had some fourth graders that helped us out. Johnny here and Mr. Gunner. And there was another, we have a fifth grader that helped us out. He's not here tonight. But the, these guys have done phenomenal. I just want to thank you for letting us brag on them a little bit. My coaching staff, Coach Lee here, helped all year. We had Scott Robinson helped in the room also. And Sean Seymour came in also to help out. And Steve Allen filled in once. And after Steve, they said that was the hardest practice they had all year. So we'll have him as a guest appearance again. So thank you all and appreciate it.
Good job. Congratulations. Good job, Gunner. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Thank you so much. We're glad to have you. Thank you for coming. Good job, you guys. Oh, and I love the jackets, too. Good job. Good job, mister. Good job, too. Thank you so much. You represent us well. Thank you, Coach Lee. Thank you.
Board members, could you, if you could squeeze together, maybe we could get right behind the junior highs as they take the picture?
Up here?
We can stay up here and just squeeze behind them.
I'll suck it up. I know, even with them down there, I have to go.
I know. You love each other.
Hey, Sholo's number one.
Sholo's number one.
It's funny how everyone parroted.
He's going somewhere. I said somewhere.
Somewhere.
Hey, Brett. How are you?
Great. How are you doing, Kelly?
Good, thank you. Item 3.3, discussion and approval of the 2022-23 Sholo year calendar. Evy, are you presenting? Sorry. Is it working? I'm not sure if it's working.
So we were on a calendar meeting. There were nine certified staff and two classified staff. We met, we discussed all of the regulations, including the 144 days and a half days that the students have to go. We discussed all that, came up with a few options, and then sent them out to the calendar staff, had another meeting, and we came up with the option, the only, the two differences is we're going to, we want to mirror this year's calendar. But the only difference, we had to take one day off because of Veterans Day, the way it falls. So we sent out a staff survey asking whether August 8th, the beginning of the year, we'd like to take a day off or the end of the year. And then also, a lot of people expressed that they would like to do winter break a week later and do it like a week in January and a week in, the last week in December. So staff results came back out of 143 staff responded, and they requested May, a day in May to take off. So that's the change in this year's calendar that we have. And then the other thing that they requested are, they voted on, and it pretty much came out half and half of the 143 responses was the winter break. So you had 50.6 respond that they wanted to keep the same winter break. And I think 50, 50.3 responded that they want to keep the same winter break. And then 49.7 responded that they want to have the winter break a week later and then have the first week in January. If that makes sense. So that's what we responded. So that's where we're at with the two different calendars, is deciding whether to take that, those two winter breaks. The only difference with the payroll calendar is that if we take the winter break, that's going to be a week later. So that last week in December and the first week in January, I, the county has not come out with a calendar yet for payroll. But if it follows this year's, that week is a whole pay period. So our hourly staff would not get that full, a full pay period. They would miss instead of doing half and half.
Did they get a full pay period on this year's calendar?
No. Nope. They have one week on each pay period that they got.
The one at the later Christmas break, they'd miss a whole pay period?
They would. Yes. If it mirrors, if the county comes out with the calendar and it mirrors this year's payroll calendar. So that would be the only difference.
Guys have questions?
So for the classified employees, if we were to go with the calendar that begins on the 19th through the 30th, there would be no break in their payroll, correct?
Correct. They would get each still. Yeah, it'd be like this year, they'd each get a week. So.
And how is it for your office as far as splitting it up? Like, you know, if we were to go the first week in January and the end of December?
For like 12-month employees.
And for payroll, just in general?
Yeah.
What works easiest for you, I guess I'm asking?
Um, well, I mean, I, I, I think of all staff. So I mean, the easiest would be to have a paycheck, right? Not skip a pay period because two weeks after, a pay period after Christmas would be extremely hard. So next year, I think we'll probably have to look at it more because Christmas falls a day later. So we'd really have to look and see if we can ask the county to change, you know, to see or split up, you know, split up the, do like a Wednesday, you know, to Wednesday, that type of stuff to see, you know, to make sure they at least get that, that pay during that time.
And that second one had like one more vote in favor of this?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
So I have a question. With the, the start date being on the 3rd, I know that a couple of years ago, we started on either the 8th or the 12th. Why, what, the 17th, why are we moving it back to the 3rd and why can't we start on the 10th or the 17th?
The 100th day puts us right before spring break and for funding, like funding reasons and stuff, we want to get our last, our final numbers in for funding. So that's why it puts us there. And then we didn't have snow rebate days that year. So I know there was, you know, a couple of days that in February, we were scrambling to figure out, you know, we, we don't have an extra day, you know, off because of the snow rebate days. And so, and we still had to make those days required for the students. So I mean, I guess safety reasons, you know, to not make that call, then we have at least those three snow rebate days.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark, there's also, I heard in the committee talking about they, they were looking for a nice split and get it as even as they could in the first semester and the second.
Yeah. And those days are on there, too.
So would it, I mean, is it, would it be problematic if our snow rebate days were Fridays? Would that, would the Department of Education allow us to do that?
Those are, since we're a four-day week, we're a non, those are non-instructional days according to the ADE, so we can't, those are days.
So if, so like if we said, you know, instead of March 1st, March 5th was the snow rebate day and March 15th, or excuse me, May 1st, we couldn't designate that like if we use a snow day, then we were going to be in school on that 5th? We couldn't do that?
My understanding of the way that it's written is those are, because they're classified as non-instructional days in a four-day, a four-day school year or school week, that we can't then classify that as a, as a funding day. So we can't bring students in and put funding for them on that day.
Okay. And then I guess so to clarify, so if we started on August 10th, we could technically do that, but we wouldn't be, is it's just because we, we, our 100th day would fall on after spring break?
It'd fall right before spring break.
If we start on the 10th?
When it, that's what the problem was. Like when we started on the 17th, it fell like right before spring break.
Okay.
So for funding, yeah.
So we could start on the 10th and still meet our 100, our, our hourly requirement by the Department of Education? Would that still be possible?
As long as we go, as long as our instructional days are over 144, we would be, we could meet that as far as the days and the hours, we would be okay.
We'd have to take off.
Did you guys discuss that in your calendar committee?
We did discuss that. And then, then the majority of the committee voted to keep with what we have. So we have those extra, extra days in there.
There was a, there was a lot of dialogue as I listened to them about, you know, having as many instructional days as possible before, before testing. And that always, that always seems to come up. Obviously, there's, there's some, you know, these calendars are really close in votes. But that's one thing that they, the teachers, they would rather have the days in, in front of testing rather than after testing. That comes up as a discussion. Was that part of the discussion?
Yep, yep, all of it. We discussed it all. And we had teachers from every school and an administrator as well on the committee.
So how would this affect us if we did start on August 10th? What would, what would be like if we changed either calendar one or two and our start day was on the 10th or the 17th? How would that affect us?
We'd have to somehow add six days on throughout the year, go later, take away the snow rebate days. So we'd have to, yeah. Which I don't know where, and that's where we were.
I, for one, am comfortable with August 3rd as a start day if that's what the calendar committee has come, come, come to favor.
We, we didn't feel like anybody really, you know, balked at the, the calendar for this year. And, and it's worked out, the start date and stuff.
Sounds like you had a lot of reasons to make that decision. That makes sense.
Yeah. And with the four-day, you know, the four-day week with all the kids, it has to, you have to spread it out a little bit more. You know, with the five-day week, we had a little bit more wiggle room to start later and.
We had the August 17th start day. Was it still a five-day week? I can't remember now. It was already the fourth?
But we took away, like I said, the snow rebate days and a couple I'd have to go back and look.
That, that is what happened. We took, we didn't build any, any snow rebate days that year.
So right now, we have three snow rebate days?
Yes.
It just doesn't make sense to me that if we went on the 17th, that's.
Yeah, and we didn't have the, we didn't have the four days either. We added those in this past year to have teacher, you know, days off and stuff. And then like the four-day, you know, week for.
Guys have any more questions for Evy?
I'll make a motion to approve number two. As our school calendar for next year.
Mrs. Boyer, just to clarify, that is the one with full two weeks as far as Monday through Friday, the 19th through the 30th for winter break, correct?
Correct. So that there would be no, no laps in pay for.
Is it the other one?
I don't know how it was put on.
I think it's the first one, Kelly, that will have no last.
Which one doesn't affect classified pay?
The first one where it's split.
It's the second one on mine.
Yeah, the one that doesn't is the 19th through the 30th.
That's the one that what?
Would not affect, like they would still get a paycheck every two weeks.
As a parent, that's the one I would prefer anyway. I feel like that if we had school that last week, nothing would get done. No kids would retain anything. I would rather have them come back in January and have that third quarter be longer. Right? The number of days, 34 versus 38 days for second quarter versus third. I think they'll maintain that learning better for the, if they have the 38 days in the third quarter.
And I actually did get a lot of feedback this last year of people enjoying that, you know, those days before Christmas. And, you know, so, so I'm glad to see that.
So I'll second Kelly's motion for passing that calendar. Did you pick the one of two weeks off in December or split?
The two weeks in December.
And that doesn't affect the payroll?
Nope.
It does not.
All right.
The 19th through the 30th. Yep.
Correct.
Second?
My second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item 3.4, Mr. Weber, talking about Navit.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the committee for putting so much effort into that.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. It seems like these years go by very, very quickly anymore. I promise I'll be brief because I, I want to be invited back. Very briefly, I did want to say thank you to the administration we work with. It's a pleasure to work with Shad. You know, he is, he has been there for us and then Navapatchy Superintendent's Association. He was president for one year, but it probably felt like five because he was in charge when the pandemic started. And it just, we were having weekly meetings instead of just like once a month. And there were a few times, I think we even met twice a week. And so we appreciate Shad and his, his leadership. And joy working with Ben at the high school. Brian Taylor is the CTE director and we appreciate Samantha Phillips, who is your new crew technician. And just as a reminder, we do have a board member on Navit that represents Sholo Schools. And that is Calvin McNeil. He's very, very faithful. He's been a wonderful, wonderful board member for us. Let's go ahead and just skip to where it says two primary purposes of Navit. That'd be like slide five, Vanessa. Just want to remind everyone, why does Navit even exist? Why are we, why are we part of the educational process? And the first reason is because we bring that funding stream. And we'll talk a little bit about the funding stream here in just a little bit. And then the second reason is for those students who have the time, we offer additional career and technical education programs at N B C. And that's not for everyone. Please be assured that 98% of the career tech that's happening with Sholo High School students, it's at Sholo High School. And that's as, as it should be. You, you have robust programs and we'll show you a list of those programs here in a little bit. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So just very briefly, we do, that, that funding comes from an extra .25 ADM and that generates approximately $900. We also pay $12,000 towards the career technician salary. And so let's jump to that next slide with the actual numbers. And so if you notice in FY '21, you were $280,000. And with the projections we have based on your ADM so far, you're looking at $325,000. So that puts you up in $7.7 million range that Navit has been able to bring to Sholo Schools. So for FY '22, this current school year, where does that $325,000 go? Go ahead, advance to that next slide, please. It goes right here. It, it goes to buy equipment and supplies in, in these career and technical programs. And, and I want to really do a shout out this evening for all of your faculty. You know, it's, it's extremely tough to keep up with just the day-to-day activities and being ready, having all your equipment ready. And on top of all of their normal duties and those who coach and do have extra duties, Arizona Department of Education had a major change in monitoring, meaning that we get evaluated as, as districts. And so we've known about that since last April. And so we started providing training for your teachers, for your director. And so we've spent a lot of time in professional development. And we also provide additional pay for your teachers that wished to keep track of a time log of how much time they were putting in and preparing for this monitoring by ADE. And so go ahead, Vanessa. And so we've really did a laser focus on your teachers this year in terms of providing them instructional best practices. We, we, go on to even the next slide there, Vanessa. We, like I say, they could be paid up to 80 hours, $25 an hour. And that's the least we could do to help offset the amount of time. Just in, just to give you a very short look at before, there were five indicators. And those five indicators, you basically had to provide one item to, to show evidence. Well, now it's nine indicators, but in some cases, there were six items of evidence per indicator. And so it was a tremendous amount of time to prepare for that. And I'm proud to report that Sholo Schools got their things turned in on time. And of course, as with anything with the department, it's hurry up and wait. So everything got turned in on time, but they're so, so short-staffed, it'll be a while before you have everything finalized. But we're excited to report that everything was turned in on time. And, and we appreciate Brian working with your faculty, helping enter all that data, tremendous, tremendous amount of data. And so we appreciate your teachers and their time on that quality compliance monitoring. Go ahead. And so as I mentioned before, for those students who do have the time to leave for three hours, we do have those programs that are listed there, cosmetology, nursing and medical assistant, auto tech, welding and fire science. So those are the programs that are available to your students that have that amount of time. But once again, the most exciting part of CTE is right here at Sholo High School and, and being able to offer those programs. Once again, I just so appreciate your teachers. Teaching is not for the faint of heart. And then especially when ADE requires a lot of extra documentation that they kept kind of changing. And so a lot of those changes were occurring right up till the starting of school. So then to get all that entered by January 11th was quite a, quite a feat. So with that, I'll, I'll entertain any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
All righty. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And John, as always, if you, if you're looking for someone to be on the Sholo TV, your, your program, I'm happy to, happy to help with that.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the report.
Item 3.5, approval of governing board resolution. This is a resolution to say that we support lifting the constitutional aggregate limit. It needs to be done by, is it April 1st or March 1st?
March 1st.
March 1st.
Want to read the resolution?
Maybe the whole thing? Okay. That's what it says. "The Arizona Legislature passed the Governor, and Governor Ducey signed the state fiscal year budget 2022, including appropriations for state aid to school districts. The budget causes Arizona education spending for the fiscal year to exceed the aggregate expenditure limit for K-12 education contained in the Arizona Constitution, Article 9, Section 21. This resolution urges the legislature to act quickly and override the limit to avoid the immediate harm to school districts because, whereas the Sholo Unified School District has timely and responsibly prepared its fiscal year 2022 budget in accordance with Arizona law, with the expectation that sufficient revenue will be available to fund its obligations. Whereas the Constitution aggregate expenditure limit is not to be overridden, is not overridden, Sholo School District stands to be forced to cut $2,998,714 from its budget on April 1st, 2022. Whereas the vote to exceed the constitutional aggregate expenditure limit is necessary to allow school districts to expend money that has already been appropriated by the legislature for the purpose of K-12 education." Only three more "whereas." "Whereas a cut of this magnitude will significantly harm student learning, teacher and staff retention, and community trust by causing large, a large furloughs and other cuts prior to the end of the school year. Whereas the school district in our community is a source not only of learning, but also economic stability and development. And a cut of this magnitude will have all, have an, sorry, an economic impact on all residents in our community. Whereas it is within the legislature's power under A R S 15-944 to mitigate this looming fiscal crisis immediately by voting by a two-thirds majority to allow the expenditure of all appropriated funds in fiscal year 2022. Now therefore, it is resolved that the school board's governing board of Sholo, Unified School District, made up of locally elected and accountable schools- made up of locally elected and accountable school governing board members representing our community, does not support override, does, I'm sorry, does support an override of the constitutional aggregate expenditure, expenditure limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and urges the legislature to pass a resolution to that effect immediately. And it would be nice if they would raise it forever. Not just this year. That's for your consideration.
Shad, did our legal counsel look at this before we, was presented to us?
Uh, this was drafted by, um, the, um, as a, as a, um, template by ASBA.
But so did our, did you all show my review before we?
Our legal counsel specifically did not.
Oh, they did not?
No. There, the, the pieces that we had to fill in were just simply the, the, um, numbers.
Is there a reason you're worried about the legality of this?
Yeah, there's a state statute that prohibits, um, the government, or government entities from, uh, influencing the outcome of an election. And there's also some attorney general opinions that, uh, divulge, that go into other areas that I don't. This isn't an election, so I don't know whether it's illegal for us to do it or not. That's why I'm asking. Um, we can't use our email or, um, pass resolutions or anything like that, uh, to influence an election. So I don't know if, you know, a legislative decision that's before a legislative body would be considered a type of an election. So that's why I was wondering.
I think it's pretty common for school board members to make suggestions about something like this, I don't think collectively.
Yeah.
It's not an election. We're not advocating to vote for any particular person or thing.
Just the students. Would you feel better if we, um, approved it contingent upon our attorney's approval of the document? And I make motion to approve the governing board resolution contingent upon our school district attorney's, um, opinion on it. And if they're okay with it, then to go ahead and submit it as soon as possible.
How quickly will they be able to look at it? This is time sensitive thing.
I can send it to them tomorrow morning, um, to turn around. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm sure they've, um, at some point have looked at this, but if you give their stamp, I don't know that it would take a long time, but I can't speak for their schedule either, so.
I'm sure they've looked at it for other districts as well, so it should be pretty timely.
I'll second Kelly's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any further discussion? No? Motion passes. Item three point seven, superintendent reports to include comments on extracurricular activities curriculum. Three point six, oh my gosh, sorry Kelly. Three point six, approval of board subcommittee to address mental health and social emotional wellness for employees. Mrs. Boyer.
Yes, I have asked that this be placed on the agenda, so thank you. Um, I, I know that we're working, um, and we have a subcommittee that is addressing our, um, social emotional wellness for our students. And I would like to see us do one step further for our employees and have a group of employees that would, um, get together and, and see what we can do to help them, um, with their social and emotional wellness, especially with everything that's been happening with the pandemic. I know that our staff has had to deal with things that they probably have never had to deal with before, um, pre-pandemic. And I just want to make sure that we as a district and as a board are serving our employees well and, um, and getting feedback on to how we can help to provide those services that may be needed or whether it be emotional or, um, however they deem, um, appropriate. Um, one of our goals that we've come up with and we've kind of dialed in, um, part of it is we will support both student and staff behavioral slash emotional slash mental health and staff development. And so I think this is a really important component of that, um, goal. And I think that it would be wonderful to have one of our administrators oversee this committee. And so, um, Stacy and I have both talked about it, or Mrs. Anderson and I, and, um, Mr. Hall, we think would be wonderful to do that. Um, he's one of our longstanding, um, administrators, and I'm probably going to bawl just because I know what's coming up, so I'm sorry. But anyway, um, he's been asked to oversee this committee and, um, hopefully we can come up with a solution to help everybody so that we can really work hard next school year and even the remainder of this year, um, to help out. And so hopefully this will be taken care of by our February, our, our April meeting. And so with that, I move to approve, um, the implementation of that.
Yeah, do you want to give some specific needs, Kelly? Just some parameters for them.
The parameters that I could come up with are, um, ways that we as a board can just help support. Um, I, I've actually kept it pretty broad just because I would want them to kind of come up with ideas. But if you all have ideas, please share.
I'd want to make sure that, um, people from different, not just all throughout the district, not just teachers from schools, but also other departments are included because it's for the entirety of the staff that we're concerned about.
And I did speak with Mr. Hall about that, about having a good diverse group of individuals. And, um, Stacy, did you have any?
Nope. I think they'll have good ideas on their own.
Would there be a mental health professional involved with this?
I'm sure that he will call upon a mental, one of our mental health. And even, you know, since we have the, the student component already, um, begun, perhaps there can be some collaboration between the two committees, you know, that so we're integrating both programs that will work hand in hand with each other.
So yeah, I hope so, John. Do you have any ideas, like any parameters? No? Brett?
Really interested to see what you guys come up with.
I am too.
I am too. I, I'm really anxious to hear what our staff, um, needs from us and how we can assist, um, especially during these hard times and moving forward. Cause some, in some regards, I don't think it's going to get any better, you know? So, so I just want us to be proactive. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Do you have a, Kelly give a first? Can you give a second?
Yeah, I.
Did I second?
I don't know. I think you seconded the last one.
That was the last one.
Okay, so then I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item three point seven, superintendent report. Mr. Housley.
Um, just to start off the, the superintendent report, we have some individuals there in the back of the room that I think all of us should stand and give them a, a round of applause. And, and, uh, the staff from Linden, um, they just received, uh, recognition this week that they are, uh, have received the A-plus of excellence, um, uh, recognition. And it's a long, hard journey and, uh, phenomenal. So maybe all, instead of having them stand up, maybe we all can stand up and give them a round of applause.
I want to see him, though.
There were only twenty-one schools in the state of Arizona this year that were designated A-plus of excellence. And, um, they, that is given through the Arizona Educational Foundation. Um, there, um, we're looking at a date to do a full-on celebration out there. We look forward to having the members of the board there and, and also members of our community to, to share in that celebration. Once we get that date and some planning around it, we'll just have a, a nice, uh, big celebration. Um, uh, Mrs. Cosgray, if, if you have other things that you would like to, to share, but she had students, she shared with me, she had students for the last two months that have been asking her every morning, did we get it? Did we get it? And so she was able to tell them that they did get it. And so congratulations to you. That's.
Good job. Thank you.
Can you tell us how long the process is? I know it's time.
We started really as a, as a group in January last year. Together. And then all summer long, we wrote and submitted in August at our meeting.
Nice. Cool. Congratulations.
So is it a four-year before you renew the?
Uh, it's four years.
Four years before you guys got to start over again? Yeah. Well, I emailed you and then, because I read it on my personal email. And I hadn't told Mr. Housley and he wanted to know how I got the information. So I didn't leak it. It was on my, it came out to the whole world. And I was like, congratulations. I was going to come over and beat me up or something.
They said they were going to put it out, but they, they didn't send it to me. Uh, I mean, that was okay. Um, but it was, it was interesting, a, a great comment. Um, hats off to their staff. Um, the evaluator said that they knew they were going to give it to them the second they left the school on the last day. So, um, they've been holding information from us for two months, so that's. It's great to have that. Um, just some other happenings. We, uh, were able to hold our first set of basketball games earlier this week. There is a basketball game tonight, um, in our, uh, on our new floor. Um, it looks great. Feels great. It's nice to have, um, everyone back in the, in the gym and celebrating, uh, that piece. Uh, want to give a, a brief update on the, um, spring sports have now started. Um, it doesn't seem like it's time for spring sports, but spring sports have started. They started on Monday. And, um, we'll be wrapping up our winter sports. The district office, um, we're waiting on, um, an engineer report. Um, they have to do a, a, the waterfall report for that, that, um, that set a property. Once that's done, all the, all the construction documents are finished. They'll be sent to the city. Depending on how long permitting takes, we'll be hopefully seeing things start to come out of the ground sometime in the near future. Um, we're, we're hopeful that we can have that building up and, and running by the start of next school year. But, um, we all know what supply chain and other things have to do, um, with all of this. We had to go through, um, just recently, the, um, schools have had to go through a mandatory, but no, um, no real meaning behind, uh, field test in writing. So all the students had to go through that and mess around with all the state requirements. But there was, it was a field, but it was mandatory. So it'd take some time out of instruction to do that as required by the state. Um, and, you know, we, we don't like that, but we had to do that. So you did, we did have some of that come up. And we have, uh, some winter into the third quarter, or into, ending up the third quarter, going into spring break. And then we'll come out with, with our state testing on the other side. So, um, a lot happening, um, as, as was mentioned earlier, time just seems to fly by. And, and, um, we are, um, meeting, um, especially with this aggregate expenditure limit. We're, we're meeting with staff of Vanessa and I are. We've met with two, we met with Whipple Ranch and, and Transportation Maintenance and Grounds today. They kind of go over our plan. Um, we, we're in a good place as far as this is concerned. And we feel like we can approach it, uh, with some confidence rather than, uh, with, with being scared. It doesn't mean that hard decisions aren't going to have to be made by, uh, by yourselves as the governing board. But there are, uh, you know, we don't have the same bleak outlook that other districts maybe have throughout the state. Cause, uh, sixteen percent is, is huge. And, um, that's going to be a difficult conversation regardless of where you're at. Um, I do have meetings set up for the other sides and we'll go around and, um, ultimately, uh, look forward to the opportunity. Just let the community know that on the twenty-fourth, uh, the board is preparing to have a, a public meeting in which the community, staff members, um, can come and give feedback on considerations. Right now, we don't know what the cuts have to be or if there have to be to what extent or any of that. But we do need to hear considerations and we want to hear their feedback on what we should give more consideration to and what we should give less consideration to, what should be our priority and what shouldn't be our priority. So look forward to, to having that meeting and hearing those, that, that feedback. That's my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Item three point eight, call to the audience, Mr. Jaeger.
Hi, I'm President, uh, members of the school board. Um, if you don't know who I am, I'm Tyler Jaeger. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Nicholas Homestead, a Sholo graduate and a lifelong member of this community. I'm, I'm up here to address you today because of two very special people. Debbie and Kevin Hall have been some of my greatest advocates and mentors since beginning work for this district in two thousand sixteen, after I graduated. Uh, they have loved me like their own son. They've been patient with me in many situations where most people wouldn't. They've never given up on me. They've always been, seen the best in me. They're some of my personal heroes. Working with them and for them has been a great blessing in my career. Everyone who knows Kevin and Debbie know their passion for students and education. In the six years I've worked for Kevin, I've seen him brave awful storms. He's led Nicholas Homestead lovingly and loyally for many, many years. During my time as an aide, Debbie often helped me along, giving me tricks and hints to try. And oftentimes she would handle my mistakes or missteps as a mother guides a child with love and care, but honestly and openly and always well-intentioned. I would not be the teacher I am today without these two individuals. What I appreciate most about my time with Debbie and Kevin is that they never made me feel replaceable or less than. They never let me feel like I was alone. Kevin treats all of his staff with the respect and love that they deserve. He's never left me out to dry. He's always given me support. He's never let a good deed or a hardworking employee go unnoticed. Debbie never once treated me like I was just an aide, working an entry-level job in her classroom, even times where I'm sure she would have loved to send me away and wish me, wish me my best along my way. She welcomed me into her room and helped me grow. She encouraged me to forge on when I had those hard days that we all have in education. However, their influence goes beyond one young, mouthy teacher. They've influenced countless lives, both of their staffs and students. I know we could sit here for hours tonight and hear many more stories of the lives they have touched. Tonight, today, with Kevin's resignation up for approval tonight and Debbie's last month, marks the turning of a page for our school district. Those are big shoes to fill. And I think every individual in this room could agree that there will never be another Kevin and Debbie Hall. Their absence will be felt. As they close out a chapter of their lives, I want them to know how much I love and appreciate them and how much love Nicholas Homestead and Whipple Ranch have for them and we will miss them. You'll hear from Mrs. Corinne Anderson in a moment, representing our entire staff with a message of gratitude and love for Kevin. There are not enough words to describe the love and the loyalty that we have for the Halls. We are sad to see them go, but so happy for whatever may come next. Sophishly, I'm sure there are many in this room that hold sentiments of wishing they would stay. However, I hope we can all cheer them on in the next adventure, their lives. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Okay. And if you don't know, I am Corinne Anderson. Um, I'm the reading specialist over at Nicholas and everybody kind of elected me to be, um, the spokesperson. And you can see I'm representing all of us that are here. And hopefully I can live up to being a good spokesperson and not break down and cry because I assure them I'm not that emotional. I can hold it together, so. Um, and I just want to kind of reflect on, I've known Mr. Hall for a very long time. The first time that I worked with him was the two thousand four, two thousand five school year, um, before he actually became a principal. I was sixth grade teacher. He was a fifth grade teacher. And he helped me out enormously, just as a colleague. And then the next year that I worked with him, he was my principal. Um, so I got to actually be a teacher for him his first year as a principal. And it was just an amazing experience. And he has impacted so many people over the years. Um, but I think back to those initial years and our society was a different place. Schools were different, kids were different. Um, and we have come to a place in education, in society in general, not just Sholo School District, it's all over the country. Good people are leaving education in droves. It's, it's hard. Um, and I think especially hard to be a principal. Because if you think about a principal's job, any administrator, you know, teacher doesn't send the kid because, oh, look at what Johnny did today and how sweet he was. Go give Mr. Hall a hug. No, you're sending Johnny because he did something horrible and he can't be in your classroom anymore. You know, the parents don't call the principal to say, hey, this teacher is amazing. You are doing a great job. No, they call to complain. You know, you don't go to your principal about a colleague that bought you flowers. You go to your principal about a colleague who did something that you didn't like. They get negative, 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 negative all the time. And I think it slowly chips away. Um, and I think that tonight is a night that I would like to just kind of take that and turn it around and celebrate what our principals do for us, not just the Halls, all of our principals. I cannot imagine having that job. It's not a job I I cannot imagine having that job. It's not a job I would ever want. And it takes a special person to remain a principal as long as Mr. Hall has. And so what I did was ask all of our staff members, because I couldn't share personal stories or we'd be here all night. But I asked them to send me adjectives that would describe Mr. Hall. And so I'm going to read them to you. And I think it, it speaks volumes as to who he is. Okay, so people said, "He is brave." Four people said, "He's kind." I had three, "Caring." Four, "Compassionate." "A man of integrity." Three said, "Loyal." "Fair." "One of the best men I know." "Genuine." "True." "A servant leader." "Positive." "Always looking for the good in others." Two people said, "Selfless." Two said, "Patient." "Above reproach." "Supportive." "A believer." "Diligent." "Proactive." "Honest." "Loving." "Gentle." "Thoughtful." "Empathetic." "Empowering." "Giving an insurmountable amount of consideration to all situations." "Humble." "Trustworthy." "A role model." "Dedicated." "Dotty," which I had to look up. That means brave and persistent. "Sincere." "Admirable." "Understanding." And then I wanted to add to the end, the word "friend." Because I think every one of us could count him our friend. Because he's, he's true. He's a person you can go to and you know, no matter who you are, from any of the staff that work there, any of the children, he genuinely cares about you. And I think that we need more of that in our world, in our school district, in our society. We need to focus on the positive instead of the negative. And Mr. Hall is truly an example of being an others-centered person. Where we live in a society where it's all about me, 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 that's not Mr. Hall. He's about others. He's touched the lives of countless people in our community and each one having been the better for knowing him. And the impact he has made will never be forgotten. And so, Mr. Hall, if you would come up here for me. We have a poster that we've all been running around the school hiding. And this says, "Mr. Hall, a great principal inspires dreams, instills a love of learning, encourages creativity, builds confidence and builds character. You have touched our hearts and changed our lives forever." And everybody has signed it for you. And then I, I got them to sneak around and steal your little P T S O form with all the goodies that you like. So we have a bag full of all of your goodies. And then in here, with our love in green and gold hearts, I have put all of your adjectives.
Mr. Hall's been teaching for over 40 years, right?
Mrs. Hall gave a number today that combined it was over 72 years. Together in, in education, in Sholo, in some capacity.
Item 3.9 Future Board Agenda Items. Anyone?
I did. So I, we attended a conference, what's it? I think it was a December conference that we attended. And Lamista and I both attended the Student Mental, Student Mental Health and Social Emotional Wellness Conference. And this is a policy that was developed by Tempe Union School District. And they put a lot of time and effort into it. And it's something that I would like us to look into. So I would like it to be maybe for first reading. It's Policy J L D A A. And it's called Student Mental Health and Social slash Emotional Wellness. And I have a, the, a copy of the policy that I'll give to Brandy after the meeting. And maybe it's something we could look into when it goes into our board book and see if it's something we might want to incorporate. And the district?
Thank you. Kelly. Item 4.1 Approval of AICM Tutor. Mr. Housley.
Madam President, this is the American Indian Christian Mission, the, the shared funds that we, we shared with them. Part of how they wanted to use it was to provide tutoring. And these are the tutors that Mrs. Ramsey has gotten interest from and, and for your approval this evening. And that's Stephanie Slater and Ashley Marshall, sorry. A motion to approve.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.2 Approval of TSI Tutor. Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, this is, TSI is, is a grant award. It's targeted support interventions and it requires to have a tutor. Nicholas Homestead's requesting Karen Buck to be that tutor for TSI.
I'm making motion to approve the tutorist presented.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.3 Approval to Implement a School Psychologist Professional Growth and Refinement System. Mr. Housley.
Madam President, as we brought before you in previous months, the counselor, this was the, these were the next steps. So 4.3, 4.4. Help us to get a refinement system in place for those two categories of individuals, employees. And so I ask for your approval of those this evening.
Motion to approve the School Psychologist Professional Growth and Refinement System as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.4 Approval of Speech and Language Pathologist Assistant Instrument.
Motion to approve is presented.
I'll second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1 Approval of New and Revised Positions. Mr. Housley.
Madam President, for your consideration, members of the board, this evening we have three, three positions for your, for your, for your consideration this evening. First is a medical billing, Medicaid billing specialist, excuse me. Many of the services that we offer inside of our special ed department are Medicaid reimbursable. At this point in the district, we haven't, at least I know for the last seven years, haven't collected Medicaid reimbursement. It might've been happening prior to that. I don't know when it stopped, but we, we haven't been doing it for a while. This is an opportunity for us to capture anywhere between 150 and 500,000 annually. And there's some other opportunities in there. It does take a lot for implementation. It does take a lot of oversight. If you aren't in compliance with what they're expecting, then they drop you. And it's kind of like a really quick thing. So we are asking for a Medicaid billing specialist to help guide in the implementation to be from approval to actually collecting our first reimbursements, it's about nine months. And so there's a lot of work on the ground. We have to get I E Ps and service providers validated. And all of these other things have to happen for that to go forward. Also, as you heard this evening, there's a high demand on, on the CTE director and state reporting change. There's other things that have changed. Currently, Dr. Taylor is serving as the Executive Director of K-12 Instruction and Academic Achievement. He also oversees White Mountain Institute, although we have a lead teacher there. He also oversees and, and acts as the function of the CTE director. We are requesting that we hire a CTE director full-time, again, in that position that we've had before. And that, that position be funded out of CTE. I will note, as the question was asked, Dr. Taylor's current salary is 50% out of CTE and 50% out of M and O. So that would mean that if he doesn't have those duties, we would have 100% of his salary out of M and O. And then CTE teacher, as you saw, our programming list tonight, one of the things in there was sports medicine. Next year, we have our first third-year students in the sports medicine program. It's gaining a lot of excitement and a lot of interest. And we want to continue to grow that interest. At sports medicine, once they graduate, there's a lot of avenues in the medical field that they can pursue, including being a sports, sports medicine person, right?
PTA or PTE, you know?
I just lost what we call them. Anyways, an athletic trainer. Sorry, not a sports. And so it, it opens up a lot of field opportunities. We do have, we, we've been able to have a good partnership with Summit. And they've got their, their PAs and some of their orthopedics. And out there, we have a trainer that's been working. And so it's a great experience for our students to be involved with those wonderful professionals. And this will just enhance that, we believe. So for your approval this evening, I bring these three, three positions.
And that CTE teaching position, that's kind of supplanting what, we used to have a photography teacher that we no longer have.
We did, we had a, we had a photography teacher, but, and we don't have that anymore. But what, what happened is in the first couple of years of development of a new CTE program, you can't collect funding. So you kind of bear the burden of that program development by yourself, through your own M and O budget. We're in our, we're in our year where now we'll collect P T E from it. So it's not the burden of our M and O budget anymore.
I would like to pull out CTE director for further discussion. But I would like to make a motion to approve the Medicaid billing specialist and the CTE teacher.
I'll second. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed, okay. Motion passes. Item 5.
No, I, I, I wanted to discuss. I just pulled the CTE director.
For more discussion, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for discussion. So I, I don't, I personally feel that the CTE director should be put on hold for a while. We actually do have a CTE director right now. And we added additional duties to his position last year. But I'm thinking with the possibility of having to cut 2.9 million, I, I can't support hiring another administrator at this point in time. I think we need to see where everything falls out in place and maybe be a little creative with Dr. Taylor. Maybe take some duties away, some, somehow figure out some way to get the other things taken care of, but have him primarily over CTE. That's just my opinion. I just don't financially think that's where we should be right now, is hiring another administrator.
Want to postpone that?
I would like to table it, but if we can, until we know a little bit better where we are financially and what we have to do, you know, here going out forward, we were kind of given some news that, you know, we need to wait and see what happens with the aggregate expenditure from the legislature. And I, I just would like to feel more comfortable financially before we proceed.
Mr. Housley, is there, are there reasons that this is being pursued now in light of all of the discussion we had earlier about the aggregate expenditure limit and some of the tough decisions we're going to be making? What are the reasons that you feel this is important to do now? Is there some reason why voting on it now is important as opposed to waiting and seeing what happens?
Hiring is one of, one of, a big factor, being able to, to get the right candidates. Who don't want to be doing it in July, that, that's one factor. The other factor that I just want you to, to consider is, is that looking at academic achievement, you know, there are some things that are professional development wise, calendar wise, that Dr. Taylor would like to implement. And right now, you, you heard the, the expectations from CTE. We've, we've added additional programs to our CTE department. The reporting on the state side, going from, from five items that require one, one reportable thing to nine that require six. I mean, there's, it, it's been a, a pretty heavy lift. And so like, that's one thing that prompts the timing of it. But more, more importantly, the, the thing that, that drives it at, at this point is just that ability to be able to get out in front and try to identify someone who we can put in there that could be successful.
Is this someone we'd be hiring immediately or are we looking at to be hiring just start in the fall?
For the next, for the 22, 23 school year.
I just don't know at this point that we can take on another $100,000, you know, salary. How do we do that?